Notice that this regular meeting of the Pittman Board of Education was advertised in the South Jersey Times, posted at Borough Hall, and a copy thereof delivered to all Pittman schools to be posted, and posted on the district's website. Further notice was posted and filed as required by law with the stating that the Board would meet and close session at 7:00 PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. The President shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the conduct of this meeting on the grounds that it violates the Open Public Meeting Act. Seeing none, good evening, welcome to Pittman Board of Education meeting, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, please join me in a salute to the flag.
(Applause). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[308.12][308.12](Applause).
Mr. Destratus, will you please call roll?
Mrs. Bolton.
Here.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Grossman.
Present.
Mrs. Cebiayono.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Papalardo.
Here.
Mrs. Poe.
Here.
Form 70.
All right, so that's going to bring us to our first public comment. The Pittman Public School District recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves in school matters of community interest. This is the first of two public comments we will have tonight. The first public hearing is on agenda items only. This is a public comment and not a dialogue between the Board and the public. You will have three minutes to speak, and it is your opportunity to comment or ask questions. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation of Apeewol. To be recognized to speak, please stand at the podium located to my right behind our solicitor, Mr. Long, and speak clearly into the microphone. Seeing none, that's going to bring us to correspondence. Mr. Destratus, do we have any correspondence?
No.
Okay. I will now move to accept a motion for the minutes of the Pittman Board of Education as held on the dates listed below are approved as printed and reading dispensed with. May I have a second?
Second, Papalardo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? And I abstain from both, please. Okay, so it's going to bring us to the President's report. One of the things that I wanted to discuss with the Board of Education that we've kind of discussed in committee was the changing for the meeting times. We'd like to move up our meetings by a half hour so that our executive session would start at 6:30, and then we can start our public session at 7:00. Is there any discussion on that? I know that each committee has kind of signaled that they would be in support of that.
So starting in September.
So starting in September, so good.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we will go ahead and get that communication out to members of the public, I'm sure, during, via social media and email, maybe back to school night, too.
Back to school night, sure.
Yeah, just whatever we can do to make sure that we don't miss any folks in making them aware of the time change.
Right.
The next item is Mrs. Papalardo and I will sit down later this week, this week, next week? Our schedules are kaddu wampas at this point.
What day is that?
All right.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Next Wednesday is what we found that worked.
So I appreciate all the members of the Board responding to the request for your availability regarding committees. We'll take a look and see what we can work out so that we can maximize participation in committee meetings and kind of fit in everybody's schedule. And I think that was it, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Preston.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about building preparations, referendum project updates, I'm going to give the floor a little bit to Mr. Caltabiano at some point. But before we get to the presentations, I just want to go over some things that have happened in the last month, super, super exciting month. I'm often asked as a superintendent, as just a, you know, just in, out in the public, you must be nice to have summers the way you have summers. I said, they're off, they're the busiest, they're really the busiest time of the year, really, building preparations, referendum, putting schedules together, super excited, exciting time of year, so we, we've been doing a lot of prep. Next week, we have a new teacher orientation, Mr. Caltabiano is leading that effort, I see Ms. Guarney here, certainly want to thank the town, we're actually reinstituting a pre-COVID era tradition, we're going to have a bus tour around Pittman. Actually, the mayor is going to narrate the bus tour. Yeah, we're going to take our new teachers around the bus, around the entire town.
Teachers.
Yeah, so really excited about that. So, you know, I'm going to hop on that bus, too, to get a, to get a, the ins and outs.
Something I probably didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, so we're excited about that, so I appreciate you planning that, too, and for the, for the town and the borough.
The Borough Bus is taking it.
The Borough Bus.
Oh, fine.
Yes, yeah. Yep, the last time was COVID.
COVID.
Okay.
Last week, we had two days, they were not concurrent, but we had two days where we had our leadership team, our administrative leadership team, together. The first day, we focused on, we're really trying to dial in on what it means to be leaders, and what really, we talked about the will of the Board a lot, really how to really focus in on this, on our mission statement of the tradition of excellence. And to that end, to our first effort, we really believe that characters really tantamount to our success. And so, we've partnered with, and you've probably seen this all as far back as the April Board Agenda, we partnered with a company called Citrus. It's a, it's a national character company that helps schools achieve status as national schools of character, which I think, and actually the people helping us do that, a lot of the executives of that, of that firm, of that group, actually live in Pittman. And so, you'll see on the agenda that the partnership right now is at no cost to the district right, at the moment, so we really want to thank them for their work. They worked with a team of administrators, and just to push that vision out. And we're going to take baby steps to get there, but you'll see eventually, surveys that go out to the community, really looking at what are our values as a town, and then we'll hone in on what our virtues are as a town, too. And so, it's really exciting work in that regard. Second to that, and not necessarily in order, but equally as important, is our focus on instruction, and specifically instructional engagement. I want to certainly commend, we opened it up to the Board of Education, we actually had four Board members attend our training this past Monday on engagement. We had presenters, two university professors who wrote a book, I want to say 20 years ago, that's really kind of ubiquitous now in education, called Total Participation Techniques. They came in and presented, even afterwards, after you guys left, they said, we've never had Board members actually attend any of our sessions, and they said, we've presented to hundreds of places. And so, we're really excited, thank you for coming and seeing that work and getting a glimpse into that. I'll be sharing that, obviously, my next letter, the things we're doing on engagement, just equipping teachers, we have educators on the Board here, and so, you know, really tapped into that, that energy and that insight, and really thank you guys for coming to that, that was awesome. I just want to highlight a couple other things from the agenda, we got Ms. Stewart's therapy dog on here, she had all the proper certifications, he's really excited to bring the dog in a couple days a week, students here, students at Memorial School as well will benefit from having that dog here. Walls lease, we, you'll see that also, I just wanted to highlight that on the agenda, I put that in my letter last week as well, but again, just want to kind of spread that news, we are partnering with Heddenberg Real Estate to try to get, once, once our central offices are moved into the downstairs portion of that building, into the old library and computer lab, we'd like to be able to rent that building out to a school, a municipality, a, maybe a federal office even, that's one of Ms. Miller's ideas, and so, stay tuned on that, that could be a real nice spoon and revenue stream for the district, so we're excited about that. One other thing you'll see on here as well is a new mandate from the NJ DOE that will require us to screen all K-3 students for literacy. I don't know if you want to chime in and talk about that real quick, but.
Sure, yeah.
That thought process there, I know you convened a whole ELA committee, and we kind of got derailed by this mandate that was thrown at us, was it June?
Well, August of '24, it was signed by the governor, and we didn't find out information until roughly March, and then additional information was released in May, so.
Yeah.
They listed out, a working group of educators listed out a list of recommended universal screeners, some more, recommended more highly than others, and tonight on the agenda, we have the Measures of Academic Progress, which is more, better known as MAP testing. It's, it's an assessment that actually adapts to the learner, right? So as students answer questions correctly, it gets more difficult, and as students get answers wrong, it gets easier. So eventually, it finds that student's level. So students in K-3 will take that two times, possibly three, but the actual state requirement is two. MAP is traditionally given three times a year, so we'll kind of see how that goes, we're going to, we're going to get teachers trained in it and meet that mandate, which is exciting.
I appreciate that. Lastly, you'll see that the title funds finally came through, an increase of $130,000 year over year. I have, when we told our Board President, Ms. Miller, about that, she kind of said, how is that possible? And I said, well, we do have April Miller as a president, who's kind of a bulldog when it comes to funding, so.
I wish, I wish it was that clean cut.
You, I wouldn't be surprised, I don't think we'll ever know, but seriously, I mean, really impressive in your efforts with fair funding and legislative advocacy, I know you use that term all the time, and it rings true. I mean, Ms. Miller has spoken to a working group of superintendents in the county and BAs in the county, helping everybody kind of really understand and dig into and demystify the funding formula, and so, we feel like we're kind of leading, leading the charge in that, in that regard, and we have some interest there, the superintendents are working on a letter to send up to the DOE, and, you know, really, really, I think that's the fruits of your labor for sure there, so wanted to thank you for that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Caltabiano to go over the really exciting new Pittman Business Academy. So take it away, Mr. Caltabiano, our new, our new title, too, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, thanks to the Board as well.
All right, so my, the Promethean Board turned off in that time, so we have to let it warm
up. Well, while it's turning on, our business academy, which has only been around for two years, it's still, it's still in the making, and I have to credit previous administration for getting that up and running, but we're not going to settle with what it was, we're going to make improvements, and continue to make improvements, not just this year, but moving forward. So I'm just going to start out with what it used to look like, which was last school year and the year before, and the sequence of courses was, if you look on the left, we have the grade levels, here's Pittman's Business Academy, and then our dual credit agreement was with Salem Community College. So, in grades nine, students would take Intro to Business, grades 10, Accounting One, 11, Accounting Two, and 12, Entrepreneurship and Marketing. Now, if you have a child in the Business Academy, you say, well, that's not exactly what happened with my child, I do realize that. So last year, some 10th graders actually took Intro and Accounting One to try and catch up to that track. But point being, how many credits were they actually receiving if they completed the Business Academy at Pittman? Well, they were getting nine total credits, they were getting three for Intro to Business, three for the two years of Accounting One and Accounting Two, and then three for the Entrepreneurship and Marketing, all from Salem Community College. So, I kind of took issue mostly with the fact that our kids were getting two years, taking two years of a course and only getting three, three credits for it, so that's where this kind of all started. So here's the new Business Academy. We're moving to a semester model, so rather than taking a whole year of Accounting One, students will take Accounting One in the first semester and Accounting Two in the second, that would be during their sophomore year. I promised Joe I wasn't going to walk around, but I'm going to have to do it, Joe, I'm sorry. So we can see here that each course has, or each grade has two courses, so in ninth grade, students will take Intro to Business and Intro to Computer Applications, 10th grade, Accounting One and Accounting Two, 11th grade, Entrepreneurship and Marketing and Microeconomics, and then 12th grade, Principles of Management and Business Law, those last two could change, they don't hold me to them just yet. What matters here, or what I think is really important, is that there's no lost opportunity for students, right? And every opportunity, the reason why it's green, is that students will get credit for everything they do. So, from Salem Community College, they'll actually receive, if they complete the academy, 24 credits from Salem Community College, and then from RCSJ, they'll get 21 credits. They actually have one less course in those first two years, and they don't offer credit for Intro to Business. I just felt, and so did Mrs. Castro, that Intro to Business was a foundational course for 14-year-olds coming in that know nothing about business, and we could not offer Intro to Business to kids that have no idea what business is, so we decided that was appropriate to keep it in there. Students could also then take these credits from Salem Community College, and they could transfer them to RCSJ. And then RCSJ has a three-plus-one program, which is three years at RCSJ plus one year at Rowan, and you walk away with a Business Administration degree. So if you complete the Business Academy here, you theoretically are halfway done getting your Business Administration at Rowan. I should rephrase that, I apologize. You'll get 24 credits of those 60, however, the credits that are remaining, students will have other opportunities in their four years to gain those credits. So you get the 24, which leaves you with 36 left, that you could do in the summertime through HSOP, there's other ways, like Applied Calculus, you actually, if you take AP Calc, you can, you can get those credits as well. So there's a myriad of other ways that you could get those credits, and we feel confident that there's freshmen that will come in this year that will actually have a RCSJ Associate's degree and be halfway done towards their Rowan Business Administration degree by the time they graduate. For those that have children in the Business Academy, we have a plan to start catching them up. Of course, we lost some time, right? So we're going to work towards that, we're going to give them that opportunity, and it's just a handful of students, so we actually know each kid, and Mrs. Gaines and Mrs. Stewart have already devised plans, or a plan, for them to start to catch up, so we'll start seeing that this year. That's it.
And I'll stop getting texts from you at 2:00 in the morning about the Business Academy, home credit, and who I got to talk to, and who, yeah, exactly.
Any questions from the Board? Or from Dr. Preston?
No, but I do want to say thank you to Mr. Caltabiano, he really led the charge in meeting with the various colleges in the area and creating this very quickly, and I was super impressed at this meeting, which we were able to get it out there, and I know it's a huge opportunity for our students, so.
Yeah, it's going to be super helpful, there's going to be a lot of happy kids at the high school, I can tell you now.
Absolutely.
They're happy that this has all worked out.
Yeah, well, it's what I would want from my own daughter, so I think it's important we try and provide it for the children here, too.
What was the, what was the line you used in kind of devising any comprehensive program, which obviously, we're going to talk eventually about, you know, performing arts and all those things?
Yes.
There really should be no reason to leave Pittman High School, that it's all going to be here, we could do everything that everybody else is doing in the region.
Yeah, like, I think unless you're going to take cosmetology, there's really no reason to leave Pittman, and we're going to have programs that are as good or better than anywhere else out there.
Yep.
And I'm really proud and confident in this. Now, on the agenda tonight, you're going to see some curriculum writing for Mr. Shivers and Mrs. Castro, right? So they're still actively working on this curriculum, so I can get the dual credit agreements in place, right? So we're still in the process, but we didn't want to wait a whole nother year, so that's why we're going to come right down to the wire, and hopefully on September's Board Agenda, we'll have some of these things in place.
And I think as much as we're, you know, obviously you led this charge, too, the excitement from Ms. Stewart and Ms. Gaines was just equally matched, I mean, just really, really excited about this.
Yeah, and they had plans of doing other things as well, that.
Yep.
Getting those things in place, but we'll roll those out and present those at another Board meeting in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
You told me I talk a lot.
That was pretty quick, if we can have like a time.
I was trying, I was trying. All right, you're in there.
All right, I just wanted to, just briefly update people, obviously you can see, I get a lot of, and we'll, we'll push this out to various subgroups that have been asking me questions about the referendum, just want to just give everybody kind of a brief update, you know, you might be driving past the parking lot and saying, is that going to be done for the first day of school? Well, I can tell you, it is. The junior, senior high school track drainage and auditorium, event parking lot reconstruction, we have pictures of that, the roof replacement, and the secure vestibules are the big ones right now. It's really kind of phase one, and it's only like, it's only really about, what, Mr. Destratus, 25% of the referendum, basically, in this phase, maybe 30% of our referendum, next year is the bulk of the work, the HVAC upgrades, the upgrades, the PES, the bathrooms, all that, so that's all slated for next summer. You can see that if you're out, if you've been out there, the track has been, the demolition has been completed, new drainage reconstruction, there's some old pipes that they didn't even know what they went to, it was interesting doing the walkarounds there. The parking lot reconstruction, you can see new curbing, which is really, really nice, new cement work, that should be done, will be complete probably early next week. They are aware, too, I know I get, I've gotten this question a lot, they're aware of the carnival coming into town, so they are making the proper precautions there with, you know, that particular part of Linden Avenue. The roof replacement, it was slated for, the work is only on this side of the roof, that is going to actually continue, excuse me, that is going to continue into the, a little bit into the fall, principals have been made aware, the work won't be done during the school day, there won't be that level of distraction, they'd start, they're actually planning to come in around 5:30, work till about 7:30, pause until the end of the school day, 3:30 start back up again and work till sundown. And did they, we have a meeting tomorrow, but I think the last week, we talked probably sometime in October, late October, early, mid-November?
Yeah, it's mostly going to be finishing work, once we get to the beginning of school.
Punch, punchless stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. We have, so Mr. Destratus and I have biweekly meetings with our architect, the engineers, the contractors, to make sure everything's going smoothly. The high school main entrance renovations, thank you for your patience this summer, coming through the junior high doors, that also should be complete soon, those exterior doors will likely be complete by the start of the school year, interior doors, both at the junior, senior high school and at PES, will still continue, they'll be outfitted with bullet-resistant glass, it's going to be, it's going to be a really, a really nice look, it's certainly a huge safety and security upgrade that we're excited for. So the window, door, and fire shutter installation will occur, actually, this week. Here's more images, this is the PES area, you can see the bar at the top, that's going to be, again, and you'll see here at PES, if you can recall, coming in through that main entryway, it shouldn't pose a huge issue, again, the exterior doors will not be affected, interior will not be completed until a couple, probably mid-September, mid to late September. This, this old, this is this Walsh's old office that'll actually be walled off, and then there'll be a door that is constructed here to get to that office, and there'll be a man trap in here for any visitors that come in. Now, most of our students enter through the side doors, one of the side doors, so that shouldn't be an issue for drop-off and pick-up at the end of the day, so we're excited for that work to be done as well. And I think that's all, that covers everything, I didn't put the walls pictures in there because that's not technically part of the referendum, but that work should be actually wrapped up by, they plan to give us the keys and turn it over to the owner, I think, September 22nd, so we're excited about that as well, just for the revenue potential, the lease potential of that building in the future. Any questions on, on that from the Board?
Looks good.
Public?
No, looks great.
That concludes my report.
All right, sounds great. Okay, it's going to take us to Finance and Facility Committee, I'll turn it over to your chairman, Mr. Preston.
Sorry, I was down a rabbit hole. Finance and Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, August 13, 2025, at 3:30 PM via Google Meet, in attendance were Superintendent Dr. Robert Preston, Business Administrator Mr. DeSantis, Committee members Rebecca Cebiayono and Stacy Papalardo. The Committee discussed several agenda items, including the June financial reports, parent transportation contracts, ESEA, and other grant funding for the upcoming school year, and the approval of services for visually impaired students in our district. We also discussed many of the referendum projects, the junior, senior high school roof is on schedule to be completed on time, the security vestibules at PES and the junior, senior high school will be pretty much completed by the start of the school year, we will just be waiting until mid-September for delivery of the interior doors, that will be the last step of the process, the track should be completed by the end of October, the employee parking lot should be ready before in-service days for teacher, for teachers beginning. We have had several inspections throughout the month, and as work has been completed. We continued our discussion about the leasing of Wall School, Mr. Destratus received the contract from Heddenberg Realty, they will be assisting us in finding a tenant for the building, our hope is to have some leasing, someone leasing the space by the end of January. With that, I.
Yes, so we also have an add-on item number 19, and it's a recommend motion to approve a settlement agreement in KH and MH on behalf of HH versus the Pittman School District, as discussed in executive session.
With that, I make a motion to approve items 1 through 19 as written.
May I have a second?
Second, Papalardo.
And discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, if I may, just want to draw your attention and ask our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Caltabiano, to speak about the 25-26 Technology Parent Handbook, specifically the technology fee that we're incorporating this year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've always had Chromebook insurance that we've offered at a price, the price was $35 per student, and we didn't get a ton of parents or families that were purchasing that insurance, we would still incur breakages throughout the course of the year, and those breakages actually were significantly. actually were significantly more than what the insurance was costing. So, then we would go through, we would go through a collections process, which when we were then billing, right, become additional man-hours to get the bills in, to then track that money down, try and get it in. So, the idea is to offer insurance, that's a mandatory insurance, at a much better rate. So, instead of being $35 per student, it'll be $15 per student and not to exceed $45 for a family. That is gonna be something that parents and kids will have to make sure they have paid in order to have a Chromebook. Of course, you know, there's always additional circumstances, but, so that's what we plan on implementing this year. I also wanted to note, too, we actually add three grade levels of Chromebooks every year, which is a significant cost to the budget, so, and you have to do that in order to keep the cycle fresh. So, we go through a four-year cycle, and then we have to constantly bring in three grade levels of Chromebooks. So, that wasn't something that existed, you know, nine years ago, and nine years ago, we actually had more funding than we do now. So, it's a significant cost and something that we're trying to keep pace with so that our students continue to have the same opportunities that they should have and that every other district has. So, that's why we ended up making that decision.
We'll get messaging out to the community on that. We did, we did post something about that priming everybody, I think, in the May, in my May report or letter to the community, but just obviously now, now we're on the doorstep of a new year, wanna make sure we get that messaging out.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for that. Appreciate that.
I could just add, I will say, we are fortunate to have an in-house tech department because it really minimizes the cost for fixing those things, and it was something when I speak to board members in other districts, such an asset, especially how quickly they turn around things for us. I mean, I know that our computers have gone into the shop, so to speak, and they're almost always ready for student use the very next day, which is incredible. It's really minimizing any opportunity for students not to have a Chromebook kind of available to them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that.
Alright, Mr. Destratus, if you could please call the vote.
Sure. Mrs. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Noda item 17, yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Higbyayono?
I have to abstain from 11, but yes to all others.
Okay. Mrs. Papalardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Curriculum and Instruction, I will turn that over to Mrs. Bolton.
Alright, so the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on August 13th at 4:30, and the meeting lasted a little less than an hour. In attendance were Dr. Preston, Mr. Calabiano, Mrs. Papalardo, and Mrs. Pope. They discussed some of the items on the agenda tonight. Number nine is the Professional Development Plan for the 2025-25-26 school year. Number 14, we talked about this earlier, the K-3 Universal Screener Measures of Academic Performance Reading Fluency Assessment, MAP for short. This is a helpful tool for assessment and interventions. Professional development will be provided to implement this screener. Number 19 is the implementation of SARAH's Spanish School. We talked about this a little last month, so we're gonna push this through now. This is a program that will be utilized with the sixth-grade students, and Mrs. Donaldson, our World Cultures Teacher, will facilitate that program. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through, is it still 42?
43.
43, as written.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Destratus, please call the vote.
Mrs. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell?
Yes, I have to abstain from number three.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Mrs. Higbyayono?
I have to abstain from 41, but yes to all others.
Mrs. Papalardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
I have to abstain from number one, yes to the rest.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, if I could turn it over to Dr. Preston.
Yeah, if I may, I just wanna introduce our new staff, several of whom are here tonight. Ms. Chelsea Fall was not able to make it tonight, but she'll be joining Pittman Elementary School as a Special Education teacher, bringing 13 years of experience across elementary and middle school settings. She holds a BS in Elementary and Special Education from St. Joe's and a master's from Christian Brothers University. Ms. Fall has served as a lead teacher, inclusion teacher, and reading specialist, and was recognized as Educator of the Year at Pleasant Valley School. Her expertise includes curriculum development, IEP design, and strategies to support students with diverse learning needs, including autism. She's excited to bring her passion for inclusive, student-centered learning to the Pittman School community. I'll just share that when her current school found out that she was coming here, I am close with the principal of that school, who sent me maybe an expletive, and I said, "Well, what do you mean by that?" He said, "He's one of the best teachers I've ever seen." So, really excited to get Chelsea. Mr. Morris, he's not here tonight, but our CST Director, Chris Morris, said that she's one of the best I've interviewed, so we're really excited for her to come, and she's got a ton of expertise. We also welcome in a new capacity, I know she's our building-based sub, Ms. Liz Jones, she's currently our building-based substitute teacher, but she'll be filling in for Ms. Fall, who cannot start until October 1st, she's bound by other contract obligations. So, she's not able to start until October 1st, but Ms. Jones is gonna support that particular MD classroom for the start of the year. Ms. Regina Shannon is here tonight. She'll be joining Memorial School as a preschool teacher, bringing experience in early childhood and special education. She earned her BA from Widener, graduating summa cum laude, and is certified to teach in both New Jersey and Pennsylvania. Ms. Shannon has taught preschool in Abseken, where she implemented creative curriculum, supported individual student needs, and led enrichment programs to prepare children for kindergarten. She has special interests in early literacy, music and movement, and science-based exploration, which she integrates into her classroom to spark curiosity and joy in learning. Now, a new resident of Pittman, Ms. Shannon is excited to share her passion and creativity with the students and families of Memorial School. And just a little tidbit about Ms. Shannon, thank goodness we met with her when we did. Yeah, I think, you know, she wanted to be in this area, she's new to Pittman and a new resident of Pittman, she would've easily gotten a job anywhere. She was another excellent interview candidate, so we're really excited for you to join us.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Yeah. Ms. Paige Blaker could not make it tonight, but she will be joining Memorial School as a part-time instructional aide, a lifelong Pittman resident. She has worked in the district as both a sub and childcare provider, gaining valuable experience supporting students from preschool through elementary school. She's currently completing her BA in Inclusive Education, she actually just completed it, just finished. She has aspirations of becoming a teacher, and I think this is a great toe in the water for her, and we talked quite a bit about growing our own teaching staff here. So, we're excited to have Ms. Paige Blaker as our new instructional aide at Memorial. Lastly, Ms. Valerie Hostler will be filling in as a long-term sub at PES. Ms. Hostler has subbed in the district before, we thank her for service, she's stepping in to fill a long-term sub position at PES for about six to eight weeks. So, welcome, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
I went right over it, so, yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Jennifer Morris Grasso will be joining Pittman Junior/Senior High School as a part-time drama teacher, bringing over 16 years of experience in theater and dance education. She earned her BA in Theater and Dance Education from Rowan, graduating summa cum laude, and recently completed her MA in Theater and Arts Administration, also at Rowan. I recognize the name when it was set up, I was a, I think, a first-year administrator in Glassboro when you worked on, it wasn't Beauty and the Beast, it was a different play, what was that one?
Mary Poppins.
Mary Poppins, yes. She was, did choreography for that, excellent, you know, super well-regarded in the area, super excited to have you on board, a lot of ideas. But just let me continue with her bio here. She attended Rowan. Ms. Grasso has taught theater and dance in multiple schools and programs, earning recognition as a Teacher of the Year at St. Joseph High School. In addition to teaching, she has directed and choreographed countless productions across South Jersey and the Philadelphia region, inspiring students to develop activity, creativity, confidence, and collaboration. A member of Actors Equity Association, she is deeply committed to arts education and excited to share her passion for performance with Pittman students. The day I met with Ms. Grasso, she sent me an email that night with all her different ideas for the different courses she could possibly introduce. We had talked about really making comprehensive programming, to borrow your term, in the Performing Arts Academy, really kind of beefing that up, and, you know, maybe oral communications, all kinds of stuff. So, really excited to sit down with you, possibly next Monday, with Ms. Stewart and Mr. Calabiano, and really kind of dial in on what those courses will look like for the students here. And just, and so, Ms. Grasso will also be subsequently approved to do the fall play and the spring musical, she'll be in-house on that, and so we're excited for that, too, kind of grow our own pipeline there as well. So, welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you.
If we could just take a brief recess so we can welcome the board, and then we'll resume in just a minute, does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Just a brief. Please.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Go to our Communication and Policy Committee, and I will turn it over to our Chairwoman, Mrs. Higbyayono.
The Communication and Policy Committee met on August 13th at 5:30 PM. In attendance were Stacy Papalardo, Melissa Farrell, Dr. Preston, and myself. The committee discussed the ongoing development of policies on elopement and odor. Strauss Esme has not yet issued their proposed policies, so the administrative team is working on getting examples of similar policies adopted by other districts so that we can develop our own if need be. So, our only action item for tonight is the second reading of the revised policy on recognizing student achievement, and with that, I will move to adopt item number one as written.
And just as a follow-up from that, I did finally hear, I did hear back from Strauss Esme yesterday. They're recommending that we discuss elopement policy 3280 and actually go to first reading in September with specific language on district responsibility, staff responsibility, and protocols for elopement, they call it wandering, but inserting it into policy 3280. So, I will have that, Kirsten and I started working on that this morning, actually, so we'll have 3280 for first reading in September.
Great. May I have a second?
Second, Farrell.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Destratus, if you please call the vote.
Mrs. Bolton?
Yes.[1739.96]